Yeah.
Yep. Please rise, raise your name, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reading of Wauhui City Council, December 26, 7:00 PM. Hope the meeting's act is posted on the wall. I'll just make some opening comments, I guess. We're skirmishing a little bit later on, you'll understand why we're looking at something a little bit different. And there's advantages to it. I think the audience will be able to listen to our council members better, and we can probably hear the audience better. I don't have to twist my neck now to see what's displayed up there. And so we'll go ahead and move along. Call waiting order, roll call.
Stuart Creachey.
Here.
Shane Sweet.
Here.
Pearl Warford.
Here.
Chris Rappel.
Here.
Ryan Madsen.
Patrick Nigle.
Okay. We don't have a proclamation. A few years ago when Wauhui Football won their first one in a long time, we had a proclamation that was presented to them. And nowadays is another unique day with football, who can, I don't know what would be the parties from here on out, but it's just a great day. So, does there anybody in the audience that has comments on something, anything that's not on the agenda? Sitting down, Department has a report.
Okay, so in front of you, you have my city administrator's report, and I just want to highlight a few things that we've been working on. I attended the Nebraska City Managers Association Leadership Retreat in Kearney as incoming Secretary of Treasury for that organization. I learned about some of my responsibilities, and we laid out plans for the upcoming year. Ryan and I, on November 10th, met with representatives from Kinetic, which is Windstream, about permitting in the right of way, they are planning some upgrades to the fire network here in Wauhui, some of it overhead, a lot of it underground. I met with the JEO Public Engagement Team that we have engaged by contract, and Mayor Johnson, about the Building Our Future project, which I'll touch on a little bit more towards the end of this. I did meet, we did meet with the TIV Committee regarding an office development project for the reuse of the Casey's Building, and that's on the agenda. On November 14th, I attended the Sioux Land Summit Listening Session, which was part of, provided by or sponsored by the United Today, Summer Tomorrow organization that helped get me to DC to lobby for, in favor of our natural gas grant for operating a natural gas system here in town. That was an interesting session, where lots of topics, affordability, housing, energy, lots of topics covered. And I walked away from that, the Sioux Land is primarily the three states, Iowa, South Dakota, Nebraska, and I walked away from that being very thankful for the situations and the things that we deal with here in Wauhui, much different than some of the challenges that they have in that area. So, when I go to something like that, I try to walk away with at least one thing that I can, makes me feel better about here, or that can help us address our challenges here. We've been working on our move to the old Inspro office location at 608 North London, and again, I'll touch on that a little bit later on, but we've been coordinating and planning and working with Red I-Tech, our IT consultant, to evaluate the space and make sure that we have everything ready to go. As I said in the last meeting, I think we're looking at the beginning to mid-January for the move. We'll probably highlight or work hard on the days when the weather cooperates. And there's one day in January, which is the 15th, where there's nothing on the utility calendar, and there's nothing on the city calendar, so that, I would expect that's a day we'll probably be closed for moving. We met with, Ryan and I met with Grant Anderson, who's a Saunders County Emergency Manager, regarding an implementation of a alert messaging and alert system for Wauhui utilities, but also for alerting the public about general public safety or community items. I think when we had this boil notice, we spent a fair amount of time going around door to door, which is great, because we got to answer a lot of questions, but there, we need to have a system in place where we can do a mass contact of everyone. And so, we're working on setting up a process for getting that in place. The system would be something that the county already gives us access to, so it would be no additional cost to us, it's just a matter of collecting the data, getting people signed up, making sure that we have accurate contact information. But we want to capitalize on the opportunity that this boil order presented in terms of people are aware of the reasons why we need to be able to do this. I also, on Monday, met with representatives from Department of Transportation in their I-Hub, Infrastructure Hub, team to talk about a potential application for federal appropriation for road improvements at the intersection of 15th and the express with 15th Street and Expressway, and then the county road, County Road L improvements. And so, we have some pieces that both the county and the city are working on. I would expect towards the end of January, first part of February, we'd be coming to you with an interlocal agreement that would lay out, if we're successful in achieving what we want, getting some federal appropriation, then this is how the project and the pieces will come together. I think it's important to lay that out before we step into that, if we're successful in getting any money. We continue to work on the, with FEMA, on the 2020, March 2025 snowstorm disaster documentation and such. Matt Reynolds in our office in the GIS has been helping with quite a bit of that, though we have a weekly meeting set up, and so we're working with FEMA reps on that. And then, some good news, we did receive notice last week that our grant application for downtown revitalization planning grant was approved. So, anticipating approval, not knowing that we were going to get it, but anticipating it, we went ahead and sent out a request for proposals in late October for a consultant selection, and those proposals are due next Tuesday, and so, we'll see what we get in. There was a notice sent out to eight or 10 different consultants. If you're interested in seeing the request for proposals, it's out on the city's website under bidding opportunities. We are looking for an office assistant, that job is posted on the city's website. We've had good interest in the position so far. In addition, we're looking for a cemetery supervisor, and we're really kind of focusing on finding a person that fits in that role. It is not for everyone, and it is something that takes a lot of tasks. Not only are you basically turf management, but you're also a little bit of a grief counselor, or you have good ears when you're listening out there when people cut up. So, we want to make sure we find the right person for that position. We've been talking about the Wauhui Super Project, and I think a couple months ago, we talked about how much does the parking streets or water improvements around that block, what would it cost to make an investment in that? And so, I have this in hand, I would like to meet with the street committee to review that. And I know Joe Nguyen has also said, I think it's been a bit since the street committee has met, so I wanted to talk about that. On our next agenda, this kind of segues into this information that I've shared with you, we're going to have an agreement regarding programming a space for public safety facility. Beginning December 1, we're going to be having information roll out about our umbrella project called Building Our Future for Wauhui. And I know we, as a council, we spent a fair amount of time talking about why it's needed, what pieces this entails, but we're rolling out this information on the city's website. And so, we're going to, we have flyers that will be shared on our website, talking about the police department, and why the police department needs a modern facility. For anyone listening or watching, I would encourage you to stop in at the police department and take a look at the environment that they're working in, the working conditions that they're in. They accomplish a lot with a not a great space, and so, there's a number of reasons we need to, not only provide with a professional space, but we also need to upgrade City Hall that currently has asbestos in the tiles and the floor, and in the ceiling, there's encapsulated asbestos that really limits the way the space can be used. Ceilings can't go all the way to the wall, because we can't disturb the encapsulation, so it just creates a really not great space. And with that, then, we see City Hall also exiting, city offices exiting. For, what, probably two years, we've been having council meetings here in the library, and if you want to stick around afterwards and help us re-lay out all the tables and put the chairs back, we take volunteers, or if you want to show up early at the next meeting, we appreciate the help. But really, in terms of a space for the city council, for the planning commission, for board of public works to meet, that is engaging with the public, inviting to the public, that is, makes people want to be involved, makes people want to sign up to be a city council person. The space where the city council was meeting previously was from 1950, when, you know, and it's just, it's not conducive. It doesn't have the audio, it doesn't have the video, it makes it difficult for recording, so those are some things we're going to be working on, as well as then the city hall spaces where the offices are. We just need more professional space as well. I cannot have a private conversation with a citizen, with an employee, with someone who's interested in investing in Wauhui. We have to pick up from my office and go to the back and hope that our voices don't carry if we're trying to have a private conversation. Again, it's because those walls don't go to the ceiling. We, we have an unlimited access for people to walk in the front door and go straight all the way back to whatever office they want. It does create a little bit of a public safety issue, and there's other reasons that are listed out in this, so again, I encourage people to take a look at this. And then, so we have a police department, they're going to be moving to the location of, I think it's 215 West Third, it's right next to Burkey. City Hall staff is going to be moving into the 608 North London, which is the former Inspro building, and then, that building is going to be, we're looking at converting to a public safety facility. The last piece of that public safety is the EMS. Currently, the EMS, when the fire hall was constructed, we were utilizing part, entirely volunteer responders to, for 911 calls, for any kind of transports. And since that construction, we have moved to, we have almost, I don't know, close to 1,000 rescue calls between 911 and transports that make, we make on an annual basis. And we have a full-time, 24/7 paramedic, and when they're at work and not responding to a call, it is, as long as there's not other things to be done, occasionally they're sleeping, right, if you're working overnight shift, they sleep in a chair, they sleep on a cot in the corner of the office. And so, not only is there that issue, but there's also the space availability for all of the pieces of equipment. We've expanded our fleet, we added a ladder truck, we added an additional squad to be able to respond, and space is crowded. So, the vision is taking City Hall and converting it, connecting it to a public safety facility, which leaves City Hall without a home, but we have a temporary location, and then that kind of moves us into the next piece of evaluating the civic center facility, evaluating where City Hall could be reconstructed, and that information is included in these flyers as well. Just a little bit on the civic center, there has been a lot of groundwork done to evaluate that current space, and how it could be upgraded, how it could be utilized, and I think we've come to the conclusion that an A remodel of that space to fit the needs of not only today, but into the future, is an expensive venture. Constructing new is expensive also, but which way does it make sense to spend our money? Something that's going to last for the next 50 years, or something that's going to get us by for the next 10? So, those are conversations that we need to continue to have. With that, if there's any questions, Jerry, do you have anything that you want to add?
Safety bond.
Yes, so, we've branched into how we're going to construct this. With the public safety facility, we have the ability to use the public safety bond, which limits the dollar amount to five cents of levy, up to five cents of levy, so. And then, the rest of the pieces, I think we're continuing to speak about, when you talk about, develop solutions for funding, and the ball just needs to start rolling, right? I don't know, do you have any, any questions?
No question.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We're rolling, and we've got to keep up with it. Consent agenda.
Thank you, Tommy. And I'm looking forward to good to decline, so I'll make emotional approval of consent agenda. I'll second that.
Hang on a moment, a second, any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Creachey.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Rappel.
Yes.
Warford.
Yes.
Okay, public hearing and associated items. Public hearing regarding an application for a conditional use for a poll sign submitted for, by North Auto. Open up the public hearing. Is someone here to speak to that, or Travis?
Or Travis, yeah. He's there.
Yeah, so I can touch on it real quickly, then Stan can cover anything I missed or whatnot. So, basically, it's conditional use application for a poll sign at the location, he is at the corner of 77 and 109, is that right? At the airpark location, he is in the C2. Any poll sign along that corridor has to be conditional use application, we've done this a couple other times. We have those in place as far as the size, height, and distance in between and whatnot. And how big was the sign again, remind me?
72 square feet.
72 square feet.
On each side, yeah.
Yeah, it's a double face, so you'll be able to read it from both sides and whatnot. Internally lit.
Nine by eight? Yes.
And it has to meet the setbacks of the structures for that zone, so he has those met on the site plan, height meets the requirements, and everything that Planning Commission recommended approval of it for that, so. Hope you've got anything else to add.
I think you come in if you guys have any questions.
Sure.
You need some way to identify that property right there.
What's that?
You need something to identify.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yes.
This is a public hearing, if anybody in the public council could speak, or, then I'll open it up to the council, if you have any questions. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion to second to close the public hearing, roll call.
Rappel.
Yes.
Warford.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Creachey.
Yes.
Okay, council, your discussion on this, these requirements, and planning, recommend approval, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a, it's an ordinance?
Oh.
So, you got to introduce.
Motion to introduce. Can we, can we do that before?
Vote.
Vote.
Well, can we vote with three rings? And he does, um, yes, Jerry can vote to wait.
On the voting floor, it could be the way we're getting through. On second, the motion.
Okay, motion and a second.
To introduce.
To wave?
Yeah, specifically, if you can get a wave, you wave, and I would make a motion wave as well. You wave, and I'll second.
Roll call, motion to wave, the three rings.
Warford.
Yes.
Creachey.
Yes.
Rappel.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Okay, now we have a motion.
You have to vote, you have to vote.
Oh, yes.
To wait.
Sorry. Do we have a motion and a second for the, if I didn't hear you?
We're good to move on, yeah.
Okay, we're fine. Are we ahead of you?
Yeah, well, that's, it goes slower. Okay.
Roll call, on final reading.
Warford.
Yes.
Creachey.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
And, sorry, Rappel, the box is all the way.
Yes.
And the mayor, yes.
You, you don't have to vote to approve it, you just need the super majority to vote to wait. We just need a regular majority to vote.
I wonder if I was going to learn today. Okay, so that is approved.
Yes.
Okay, public hearing, are there any applications for a conditional, for electronic message sign submitted by Ots, Amoco? Open up the public hearing, you want to speak to that, or?
You have Travis, please. Travis. So, yeah, this is before you again for electronic message board at their location on Chestnut, at the filling station there, they are wanting to update their poll sign and rebrand. So, electronic message boards are conditional use once again, so that's why that's before you here. Planning Commission listened to this, recommended approval of it. With electronic message boards, I just want to make sure that everyone knows, they're 35% of the allowed sign. Basically, when they reviewed this, it is at that 35% of the poll sign. Poll signs are not allowed technically in this area, so that's kind of the hard part of that, that they're able to do face changes, normal maintenance, whatever of those, as long as, you know, substantial damage or what, doesn't occur. So, it's discussed as far as electronic message board being, meeting that 35% and everything. Basically, they're getting rid of the BP, adding the Amoco, and then, the one where they have to put the letters up manually is going to be electronic message board. The polls are going to remain, because this was questioned on this too, the polls are going to remain, but the face cabinets and stuff, they've got to modify them, but it is actually going to be smaller than the current size, sign is, and the height is actually going to be reduced. So, I will be able to permit for that as a simple face change without a substantial improvement. So, basically, it's just approval of the message board here on this. So, like I said, Planning Commission listened to it, and met the 35% of the sign that's there, or was proposed, and so, let me forward.
So, it's just, it's just the part at the bottom, right now, it's, like you said, manual letters, and it's going to be replaced, basically, I mean, the whole thing's being replaced, but the part that we have to permit is just the part that's going to be the flag, basically.
Yeah, basically, the only portion that is conditional use is electronic message board, because we have scrolling limits on that, and everything's put in place for that, so.
Yeah, they can see.
Yeah.
Good improvement. Anybody else want to comment?
I think it's going to stay the same, except we just talked for eight minutes, everything.
Public, do you have any more comments?
Like the American flag. Is that the digital American flag? Or does that all change?
Well, it'll all be electronic up there, so we can put whatever we left there.
The flag is.
At your time, so we can have a flag, we can have Go Huskers, we can go have.
Oh, nice.
Whatever. It's all electronic, I guess, very quick. We used to have to go up there and change everything, letter, my letter, maybe I didn't like doing that. I didn't like doing it either. So, but we will still have free air at the place, because that is one of the stipulations of BP and Amoco, you have to give free air. So, we will never charge for air. So, it's just one of the stipulations that this company has, which is by us, one of the few, or probably the only town, or only company that actually does that.
Yeah.
So, we'll try and keep that free air in between there, if that's possible, with the zoning, and basically, other than that, we're just trying to improve the way that everything looks.
Any other comments? We do have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, roll call.
Creachey.
Yes.
Rappel.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Warford.
Yes.
Counsel action, I think, I would say if it's been approved by planning, and if that was the type of rule, I think a motion to introduce.
Second, second. And then, motion with, second, second.
Okay, roll call, motion to wave.
Warford.
Yes.
Creachey.
Yes.
Rappel.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I.
How to read on the ordinance.
Yep.
Roll call.
Warford.
Yes.
Creachey.
Yes.
Rappel.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Sweet. Approving.
Little twist on words.
Now, we move into, we are part of Community Development Agency, so we'll convene as public development agency. Item number two, 250 West 12th Street LLC, holding subsidiary of JEO Building Company, Office Development Project, resolution to issue approval of redevelopment plan amendment contingent with review of the Planning Commission, a final approval by the city council.
So, Kevin Anderson with, you are representing JEO.
JEO.
JEO Building Company, has acquired this property and is applying for taxing increment financing. And so, sitting as the CDA, some communities don't have city council and the CDA as the same group of people, we do. So, sitting as the CDA and taking action to approve this, to move to the planning commission, is the first step for adopting a redevelopment, an amendment to our redevelopment plan, as well as a specific redevelopment agreement for this project. If you have any questions about the project, I think there's some, there we go, some imagery. I'm going to let you zoom, kind of see what their plan is for the property. I'm making some significant improvements, and I'm going to let Kevin, who wants to speak about the project, go ahead, but if you are in favor of this, once you hear about it, it would be two resolutions that you need to approve to afford.
Good evening. Kevin Anderson with JEO, with JBC as a subsidiary, which does the holding of a lot of our properties. As Melissa mentioned, we are requesting taxing increment financing for the purchase and redevelopment of 250 West 12th, about $270,000 of request of taxing increment financing. This is a scenario where that, you know, we're going to have a lot more eligible expenses in this than what the end product will support in terms of evaluation. We've got a current valuation of the property of about $122,000, and we anticipate a final valuation, and all said and done, of about $1.1, $1.2 million as an estimate, and so the TIP is based off of essentially what can be supported by that, that valuation. Of those expenses, the majority of TIP funds will go to things like acquisition, demolition, and redoing the parking lot and associated landscaping, associated with the project. There are others, but those are going to be the vast majority of that $270,000 request. It's about a 2,400 square foot building, the property itself is about 19,000 square feet. Our proposed use is storage warehouse for state championship trophies, so it's going to be... We need a big voting for that. No, proposed use would be professional services offices. We do have a user in mind. Unfortunately, I can't disclose it at this point. The, essentially, that is contingent on receipt of the TIP funding, based off of, you know, where we can make this work in pencil out in terms of supportive rents on the back end of all of this. So, that's kind of the use case for tax increment financing. Without that assistance, we just, you know, we just can't meet those rent areas. So, personally, I love these adaptive reuse types of projects. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for the community in both the look and feel of an important intersection in the community, but also, I think, is a use that we're going to enjoy in good community use. So, I think it's a project we can all be proud of when all is said and done. So, as mentioned, JEO, via subsidiary, JBC, JEO Building Company, will be the owner and lease it out to a tenant, and the improvements will be constructed by our subsidiary, general contracting subsidiary, St. Creek Construction Company, in a second.
Do you have timeframe? I mean, assuming everything is approved.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we could start work as early as January for some of the interior stuff, and obviously, the exterior work upon thaw and that sort of thing. About a four to six month build out from there. So, it should be allowing come more weather months, first of 2026. So, July, August, January, I think.
And a redevelopment agreement has an effective date of January 1 of 2027, which is when the new valuation, so the new valuation kicks in, and they would receive their first tax increment financing payment in 2028, after the $270,000.
And Regal Development owns the property, extensive interhuman processes on this project, which is a very nice project. And that property was purchased for a good use, and this is a very good use of that property.
Yeah, and I forgot to mention, you know, some of those improvements will also be access improvements, consolidating some access points. So, what you're looking at north is to the right there. Currently, there are two access points off of North Chestnut, one that's very close to the intersection. So, by consolidating those, you make a, you know, a better traffic scenario as well.
Give her an eyes word.
Do you have some additional renderings about conceptualization?
So, we're looking, we're looking at a motion, we need a resolution?
As a CDA, you would need to approve the resolution for the redevelopment plan amendment, and then a resolution for the redevelopment agreement.
I would do those.
First one is a resolution to issue approval of redevelopment plan amendment.
So what? And I will say.
Questions? Go call.
Creji?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Okay, the second is, as stated, seeing these gentlemen. Resolution to issue approval of amendment, redevelopment amendment, contingent to final approval by the city council.
So what?
Questions? Go call.
Creji?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll reconvene as a city council and... Actions now requiring public hearing, approval of certification for open positions for the 2026 election. Does anybody have the information and...
Yes. This side of the room is who is up for reelection. Stuart, Creji, Shane Sweet, Carl, Warford, and the mayor as well. I'll just need you guys to...
Do we have a choice? No, we have to agree. I didn't know that was a question.
As in, how much do you have to file by February 17th?
Um, I believe that sounds correct. I have this here.
February 17th, the four counties.
Yeah, so today's just the notice, right?
Today's just the notice. I have to have the notice to the county in December, and then January 5th is when incumbents can begin filing. February 17th is the last day that incumbents can file.
Close your door. Second.
Questions? Go call.
Warford?
Yes.
Creji?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Okay, number two. Yeah. Please start. Numbers, go. Approval of parking plan for Market Suites Park. Go call Mike.
Yeah, I'm tactically, I guess, so, yeah, went through this with Planning Commission. Looks well, I believe it was approved. We have presently designed 81 parking stalls with the need for 77. So, 77 bedrooms. I think the area in... Limbo is the area closest to the bank's egress, where we're currently designing that 90-degree parking, when there's potentially a need to go to angle parking. So, both of those scenarios are, you know, being considered, but yeah, that's what's got in.
Yeah, so I apologize for not being here last meeting when this was here. So, yes, unlike Mike, I understand that there's some concern with the 90-degree angle parking by the easement area next to the bank area there. So, I did do some checking in on that. That is a one-way area, and I do have the easement here. The easement area for the bank driveway is 20 feet wide. But the driveline that they have available, including that easement, which Cameron, the contractor, had been working with through Mike here, had thought that that was the easement point of it, but it's, it's actually to the building. I still, even with 90-degree angle, or 90-degree parking, 24 foot is the width required for two-way traffic. So, maneuverability wouldn't be a problem there. The only thing is if the car's in the drive-thru or anything like that, correct? So, basically, looking at that then with that easement in place, the angle parking would work the best for being able back out of that. Then there's going to be added room for that. They're going to be encroaching in on the easement a little bit, but it's not a building, so as far as that goes. They will lose a space or two, I think, is kind of what they were saying.
Potentially one space.
One space.
If we go to angled, yeah.
But they will, they will still beat the parking and still have a couple extra, actually, than what is required. So, I think that's, you know, that's what's going to move forward. If they can do that, I think that's a possibility, is getting that angle parking in there, and then everything should be addressed with this, correct?
Yeah, we're just trying to, again, clarify the interpretation of where the easement is. So, Civil's doing that as well, it's kind of double check. But as a correct leave of side, if there's enough space, if it needs to move to angled, there will also be enough space, so.
Whether it's pleasant or...
A stall or two. We have a little bit of buffer room, based on the design that we're laying out, so.
Yeah, so the parking stalls, none of the stalls are encroaching in on the easement area at all. So, that area is clear. So, if we do have the angle parking, it will move easier for people having to back out when someone's in the drive-thru. Kind of makes sense. I don't feel that that's going to cause an issue with numbers. Obviously, the numbers are there and everything. And so, we don't have the rendering, but I would think that maybe we could approve the parking plan contingent on that angle parking moving forward.
Planning Commission did talk about it, and they did say, yeah, do the angle. There was also a question on handicap stalls. Does that...
Those were added. Yep, handicapped stalls were added, the bikes were added, so he meets all accounts on...
And that didn't impact the parking stalls?
Correct.
Okay. So, I guess I'm still, from the standpoint of, let's see a draw.
Yeah, so we have, we have that drawing.
But I don't.
Yeah.
You're still going to be back in the traffic.
Yes, but it isn't at a 90 degree. You know, and I'm just concerned with parking of the project. We hope the project is successful. We know that it is already creating, there's going to be some parking issues. And that, overall, that's just a concern, and that's also some city concern. We have to help out with that.
So, the new, new version of this, it shows the handicap stalls meeting the four required, the bicycle stalls. The only thing that didn't get changed was that 90-degree parking. Everything else is there. I don't know.
So, there could be possibly vehicles leaving the bank and coming both...
Right.
Going toward Fifth at the same time.
Yeah, it's going one way. Yeah, it could happen.
So, the whole thing is one way. Nobody's going to be allowed to come off of Fifth Street to go in there and park. The main reason that it's 90 degrees is because you get to keep an extra parking spot. Correct. That was what I was looking at last time, too. I thought the same thing, right? So, it's, it's...
It is marked.
Do you need the extra parking spot if you want it, you know? Yeah, I guess I'm looking at the flow of traffic. Yeah, so no matter what, it is going north. Right, the traffic has to go that way. You can't, I'm in the other way. When you get an extra parking spot at 90 degrees, if you don't get a... But if you're 90, you're backing out into a drive-thru window.
It's going to be harder to maneuver out of space. If someone's in the drive-thru.
So, that's what I was thinking, the parking spot. Now, the 90 adds space, but that angle, you lose a space, but at least you're not backing into it. And I'm not arguing the concept. I'm saying, put a line on it. Why are we approving something that draws lines on this thing? So, we can approve it as you're discussing. Whereas saying, yeah, we're going to do it. It's been a month since it's been planned. Yeah, we're going to do it. Still hasn't done. Well, last week, two weeks ago, we tabled it, so you can draw a couple angle lines on it. Still not done. Why?
Technically, though, the parking plan approval is just for surfacing. It isn't, it isn't supposed to get into the number of stall count, any of that stuff. It's for surfacing only.
But we've done it. You know, so, when it's a planning commission with all of this information, we're in front of us now with all this information. If we are, if we're approving parking stalls, why not give us a natural...
You're approving surfacing.
It's concrete. Then why are we spending all this time on parking stalls?
It's just information as far as it meets the number of stalls and whatnot. It doesn't, in the approval process, it doesn't say that you're going over the number of stalls. That's black and white in there.
See, guys, thank you. Thank you. So, when we approve this, it's to say, this is what the service is going to look like, and they meet the number of stalls required, and they really will meet the number of stalls required.
It's Travis's job to ensure that any plan that's submitted meets the zoning regulations for numbers of stalls. Also, in the zoning regulations is the size of the stalls and the number of ADAs, and the number of the bicycle stalls. And I, I guess, in the, I understand your position, but I also feel like he's here. He said that's what he's going to do. Travis has talked with Civil. That conversation is, that is in motion. We just don't have a physical drawing saying that's what's going to happen.
I can't give a building current ready until Travis approves it. And we're here today just to approve the surface.
Yeah, once this parking is approved, then we can move forward.
Well, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
I have any problems with it otherwise, so.
I think the angled parking also makes it clear...
That it is one way.
That it is one way.
Right, yeah.
Right, you run that, yeah.
That's the way I... It's a little, like, people are used to how it's been lighted now, right, over eight years. And once you build out that corner on the northwest corner, that building's going to be a hard spot, right? You have three stories of the building, plus the new curb, plus the new sidewalk, all the things. So, I think everyone here in this room is just a little set on how it is, because it's built like that. So, new design, build still flow, safety is our best, and we're trying to look through the project of parking.
I've seen vehicles, since it's kind of a, the parking stalls now, a parking lot, which officially it isn't, but I've seen cars pull in and into the main part of the parking. Put a sign up there, no entry.
Yeah, on the plan, it says, actually has a one-way sign. You can't see it on there. There is a number indicating one sign. Yeah, and then...
Right here, this is a sign.
Okay.
And then there is arrows on the plan to be painted there for one-way traffic, so. So, it'll stay all one-way around the bank, just like you did on...
Yeah, arrow here as well.
So, yeah, we'll just get those angle parking there on that. You'll still meet the parking requirements and everything, and we'll be good to go.
Legally, we call it a person plan. It has nothing to do with parking. It's just surface. Now, parking count, just to show you.
If I could give you a little history lesson on how we landed here. Our, our zoning regulations didn't have anything about surfacing requirements. And the city council, planning commission at the time, did not want to commit to making someone have to put in hard surfacing. So, they said, well, our regulations say hard surfacing unless it goes to city council, and the city council approves a parking plan that says you can have fresh rock. Fast forward 15 or 20 years, this is something that comes to you every single time. It's a hurdle every single time when it comes to development. And so, it was truly intended to be just the surfacing, and that's the way the regulations were used.
Right, and a good example, I think, of that is like with the campus, where they wanted the imperbial, instead of hard surfacing for stormwater, you know, that's a good idea that where stormwater runoff is a problem there, you know, gives another review on something that is, you know, we're not used to. Some, a new product that we decided we'll give it a chance and see how it goes, and we'll go from there, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any other questions? Go call.
Creji?
Yeah.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Thank you.
Warford?
Yes.
Tell me, I need a new computer. Okay. Next item, second reading on ordinance 2488 to adopt additional construction delivery methods, including construction, design, build, and construction manager at risk as alternatives for traditional design build as allowed by the Nebraska revised statutes. This was... Were we short people last time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would also, I'd just point out to you, I, I, this is, this example in the packet that's right now, and so, I think if you just, in concept, approve the second reading of the ordinance, I have a draft prepared. I just needed to get it to Joe and to review. There was two less days between the last council meeting. Time got away from me.
So, we need just a second approval here?
If, yes, please.
It's not a true, it's already out.
Just...
Motion to approve?
Second, yes.
Go call.
Do I just... Warford?
Yes.
Creji?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Okay, number four, approval of resolution 2025-17 declaring items as surplus.
These are items from the Parks and Recreation Department. The, if you notice, the playground equipment from Plagic Park is listed. That is in part because Kevin said that it's... That is, um, in part because Kevin said that some people have reached out to him in interest of that. Um, he said that he checked with LARM and that there's no liability for selling old playground equipment to another home. Pretty much, yeah.
Just curious, would that, would that be removed by the city or by the, by their? I mean, we might not have an answer, I guess.
I don't, I don't have an answer. I believe that it's, that the city was planning on removing it regardless, so.
Right, so it's had to have been so much to be removed by whoever's building, anyone, when they put it in, and they don't, for one, um.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that specifically.
Yeah, these are a surplus item. I'll make the motion that we declare these three items listed as surplus.
Questions? Go call.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Creji?
There's comments on items not on the agenda. Um, I just urge you to read this, uh, as it's out there, people are gonna be probably asking questions. Uh, we don't wanna, I guess you can refer to the, unless we're, I mean, lately I've been a little more involved, but, uh, so we, uh, we do. The agenda is probably answered. So the move, uh, for this change here, uh, as of January first, there will be no more committee meetings or anything in city. And the, we're moving out, uh, in the way and then.
It's everything here. Committee meeting, there's a lot of people here.
When we get into the new, the temporary location, there is a meeting room, but a committee, a council committee authority, as long as there's only a couple staff members, but anything larger than that would be in.
And it's easy a little bit, I don't know if you're gonna, is it? My suggestion was if there's not a public hearing, so a lot of people aren't gonna be here, we could set this in. So I'm going to, I guess, I'll go after first.
Yep. Some of, some of the conversations that we've had is it might be easier just to pick a layout and stick with it regardless of.
That's fine.
Public hearing or not, so. I'm also looking to get nameplates real.
Well, I hope we wear our lunch shirt.
Council, any comments?
That's what we had, it was nameless.
Yeah, it's temporary. Any comments? Not reading a gentleman.